So what I really wanted, I wanted to bring everybody up to speed on where we are so far. I think we've made great progress. Daisy was a huge help in this, getting all the invitations out. Have you heard back from anybody that might be attending?
No, not really.
Because I don't have a real count. Okay, so anyhow, obviously, all the honorees were contacted and committed to coming to the event. And I reached out to Dunkin' Donuts and they're going to supply all the refreshments, so that's covered. Ayana worked with Din Brothers and they're doing the medallion or the medal to give to people. Okay, and Daisy will have to start working on the proclamations. We'll probably get those from the mayor, the city council, and the delegation. So that's okay.
I definitely spoke to Bud regarding our citation. And he said, of course, that he'll get that done, and he's definitely going to also attend.
Okay, that's wonderful. Yeah, we'll probably have him speak then on behalf of the delegation, because I don't know who else will attend. So alls I wanted to do today was get a sense of how the program should run. And then I can print something up and we can have it that day, a program agenda. I thought we would start with a welcome, obviously. You know, I have not confirmed, I did ask her, Reverend Catherine Cummings. I did mention it to her, but I don't think I have followed up to do a invocation. The other thing that I wanted to follow up on, the only other thing that we haven't covered is music.
Now, when you say music, are you looking for, you don't want a DJ, you more want like something like-
I want something at the event.
Like Bluetooth, somebody with, you know-
No, I'm looking for somebody that could either sing or do a spoken word, or I think that would be a nice feature of the program, do you? Or do you think it's necessary?
I don't know if it's necessary, but I think it would definitely be a highlight and would definitely be added plus, definitely.
Okay, okay, so-
Even if somebody did it with an instrument? You know, some of the high school student could do it with an instrument?
Yep. So who do I, who would know that? Because it'd be nice to have some students, since everybody's from the school department.
I don't know exactly who to reach out, I definitely believe it would have to be someone in the school department, main office.
Ayana Crawford is present.
You know, maybe I'll call Azelle.
Yes, but you know, SciTech does have a band. Not saying that the whole band can go, but I'm sure someone in the band does solo.
Yeah.
Ayana is joining, by the way, guys.
Oh, good, good. I just talked to her in the car. Oh, boy. Hey, Ayana, you're muted. Do you have to unmute her, or does she have to do that herself?
Well, I get it myself.
I just asked her to mute.
I'm just looking at Ayana. You're muted. Okay, so, so, okay, so why can't I see anybody, Daisy?
They don't have their cameras on.
Okay, there we go. Hey, Ayana.
Hi, I just, I just got here, we just got off the interview with the Republican.
How did it go?
It went good.
Oh, what a cute cat.
Yeah, this is, she seems like she's upset.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, she probably isn't happy that you were away.
Right, that's, that's what's happening.
Yeah, well, I'm just doing, doing an update. I gave you our previous conversation, but I think we're in great shape. We've got all the honorees committed and coming. We have freshmen's taken care of. You've done a very nice job with a gift, the medallions. We'll have proclamations. I'm looking for flowers.
Yes.
And then the other thing that, and I will, the other thing that I, we had talked about, but I don't think anybody really made any connections, was some kind of musical presentation or performance during the event. Do you think it's necessary?
Um, I think if we had something-
Yeah.
Just, just something short and sweet.
Yes, yes. Where do we find that? Anybody on here, musical? Hey, Daisy.
What about the community music school, maybe a youth performer?
Daisy does so many things, I bet she can sing too.
What's that, what's wrong with her?
Um, what about Chanel's mom, Chanel Ford's mom, she sings. The young lady that works in the-
Yeah, she does.
I'm thinking more of students, because there's so many people from the school.
Exactly. How about like a singer or a, that plays an instrument, maybe?
Yes, yes, that's what Kim was just saying, an instrument. So do you think Azelle would know that? Who would know that?
Um, we can contact any of the schools, but yeah, Azelle would know, yeah, Azelle would know.
I will call Azelle tomorrow.
Okay.
So that takes care of that. And you're going to reach out for the flowers?
Yes, I'm sending her a message. And how many do, what do we need from her?
Well, I think they should all get a bouquet, don't you?
You think so?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do, um, how many is there, five?
Four.
There's four?
There's the superintendent. Then there's Catherine Mastriani.
Yes.
And then there's the woman from the Springfield Education Association. And the student. Now, I don't know if the student should get something different, or they should all be, they should probably all be the same.
Yeah, she, I'm sure the student, she's seventeen, I'm sure she likes flowers.
Yeah, okay, so that takes care of that. So then, they've got, we've got the medallion, we've got the flowers, we've got the proclamations, I think that's enough.
Yes.
Now, the next thing on the agenda is first we'll do the, we'll do the welcome, and then we'll do remarks. Introduction of, introduction of, you know, elected officials and I think I'm going to ask Tracy if she wants to introduce her friend, or if she wants to do a short history of International Women's Day. That should be part of the program.
Okay.
So, Dr. Denell.
Dr. Denal.
Denal, Dr. Denal. Who will introduce her?
Well, we mentioned Latonya, and so we need to check it-
She's not sure she's going to be there, she said that last night.
Yeah, she said that last night, so if not, it could-
She might be in Boston, yeah.
Right, it could be either Trey, well, I could do it, I could do it.
Which one do you want to do? Do you want to do the student, or do, because you have, have had this, seems like-
Oh, right. Yeah, I kind of would like to do the student.
Yeah, what, you do the student?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and Tracy will either do her friend or the-
Superintendent.
Yeah, well, you know what, that's probably, but Tracy's the one that asked us to do the woman from SCA. She may want to do her.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, I think we'll do Tracy for that.
And then why don't you do Dr. Denal then?
Well, I want to make sure everybody gets to play a role.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, I want to make sure everybody gets to play a role. I'll probably ask, you know, you and Denise and Karina and Kim and Jillian have really been involved with this, so I think each of you should get to play a role, yeah.
Well, it tracks Jillian to do.
Yeah, I think I will. We didn't, unfortunately, we had a problem with her email today, so we wouldn't be able to, okay, so we'll figure that out. Now, to simplify the program, Kim said that Buddy's coming, so Buddy can represent the delegation. And if there are proclamations, we'll just give them one, instead of going through several. The same thing for the city council. I'll see what other councillors are coming, they could represent the council and just give the one proclamation. And of course, the mayor, the mayor is committed unless he has a medical appointment, so he can do his own proclamation. But I don't want to have eighteen people speaking, so we'll just try to simplify the program. So, let me ask you. We'll have each of, we'll start with Dr. Denell, Denell. I better get someone that can pronounce her name. We'll start, we'll start with her. Should we give them each individually, as each one comes up, give them the proclamation, medallion, and flowers? Or should we do that later?
No, do that right away, because they want to take pictures.
Okay.
You know, and if we don't, yeah, let's have everybody get their awards.
As they come up?
As they come up, and then we take a stop for pictures.
Okay.
And then move on to the next person, just because we're not going to have a whole heck of a lot of time.
Okay, and I will, I will reach out to Ed Cohen tomorrow too. And Daisy will do the, now, when you do a media alert for Orlando, for an event, you, how do you, how do you word it? Do you do for immediate release, or what do you do?
Yes, for immediate release, and we do the who, what, where, and when.
Okay.
And we can, we can certainly do that, you know, we can do that. Because I see that there's a press release that already went out.
Yeah, yeah, but this is the, they come to cover the event, the day of the event.
Yeah, so I saw that, so we can do, a week before the event, we can do a press release, I mean, a press, um, not a press release.
Yeah, maybe the Monday, the beginning of the week.
Yeah, the media advisories, so like that.
Media advisories, that's what it is.
Yeah, just to kind of remind the media that we're, that we're going to do it.
Yeah, and how, how was the response from like twenty-two or forty? Oh, there's Zaida, hi, Zaida.
Hi, Zaida.
Good afternoon, hi there.
Today?
Um, you said, what's the response from, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Twenty-two or forty to your events, has there been much of a-
Oh, yeah, yeah, we get, we always get good coverage, we get very good coverage with the media. Twenty-two is better, you know, in terms of out, but the forty will, will announce it, they'll do their highlights. But sometimes they're just strapped with their staffing, and they're not able to come on site.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's what we've seen.
Yeah, so, Zaida, we're making great progress with, with our event. We have, thanks to Ayana, we're giving nice medallions, and we're getting flowers and proclamations. I, I've been able to secure refreshments. You know, when you think about the fact that we have, we, our budget is zero, we actually accomplish a lot of stuff, so that will all be taken care of. One of the things that we were talking about today that we're not quite sure about is some kind of a musical presentation. And I don't personally know any students that do it, I don't know, do you have any connections with anything like that, Zaida? Anybody that could do-
What about Christina Cologne, Ayana, remember her? She was at the IOCC, she sings.
Is she somebody you can contact?
Oh, yeah.
I could try, what do you want her to do?
Is she a student?
She's, no, she's not in high school, she's older, she's like maybe in her twenties.
Oh, well, we just feel that some, at some point in this program, it would, it would add to the program if someone read a poem, did a short presentation, you know, or something like that.
Yeah, we can get somebody to do that. You know who else, Ayana, oh God, what's her name's daughter?
Which one?
I can't think of her name. She used to be your, one of your interns.
One of our-
A younger, Sonia, Sonia's daughter.
Oh, Jacenia?
No, not Jacenia, is that her name? No, that's not her name.
Oh, not Jacenia, um, oh, I know, I know who you're talking about.
She reads poetry.
Oh, that would be good.
Oh, Justine, Justine.
Justine, yeah.
Justine, okay, oh, Justine, that would be good.
Okay, that would-
I can reach out to Justine, or if you want to, Zaida.
No, you can reach out to her.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great. And then I think that really kind of completes our program. I don't think we need to do anything else besides proclamations.
Now, what date is this? Because I think I'm not available.
Introducing the award-
Uh, March sixth.
March sixth.
Oh, okay, I'm available.
Three thirty. And-
What time?
Three thirty.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay, hold on.
Several of our members are teachers, and they wanted to make sure they could get to the event.
Do you think three thirty is a good time, or should we push it back to four thirty? Because a lot of people, well, one, like you said, they're teachers, and by the time they get downtown, or the ones that work at the school department or in the office, would they be able to get there for three thirty?
Well, that's kind of the time that's on all the-
Yeah, that's-
We've already sent that up.
I mean, what we could do is we could get everyone gathered, and maybe by like three forty, three forty-five, we'll start the official program, so we don't have to start exactly at three thirty.
Right.
Um, we can get people- I, I'll be in Connecticut, so I'll be on my way back from Connecticut, so.
Okay, so we can give, we can give like-
I'll get there when I get there.
Exactly. So I would say fifteen minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes before we start officially.
Right, right, it does take a while for people to get there, and I will speak, yeah.
We do have a little social, social time.
Exactly.
Well, we, well, we're going to have refreshments, so I think we will do that after.
Oh, yeah, and then people could eat during that time, that's a good idea.
We're going to have refreshments. Yes, Dunkin' Donuts will be helping us out, and I also spoke to Coffee Cup. I didn't realize they had moved. They used to be at-
Oh, yeah, they did.
Plaza.
I just paid for my daughter's baby shower cake from them.
Oh, yeah.
Ooh, nice.
So they said they would do, they make great pastries and cupcakes.
Yes, they do.
So, and for us too, so we'll have fun-
Save me an Eclair if you get one.
What's that?
I said, save me an Eclair if you get one from them.
An Eclair, oh.
I'll get something chocolate, yeah. Okay, well, I think this is going to be a great program, but as far as speaking, we don't want it to be too long, but I, I do think we should afford each awardee to say something.
Definitely.
Give them like three minutes or something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Three minutes. Yeah, and we'll tell them beforehand, yeah.
Yeah.
And whoever introduces them, we'll just do a brief bio.
Yeah, we should try to get those, maybe we can do those requests now. I mean, Dr. Denell's, hers is on the website, so we have that. And I'm not sure, oh, you know what, Tracy's is probably on SEAs, because she's the president.
Yep.
So we could probably find them all now.
Okay, I'll look tomorrow. And Catherine Mastriani, I'm sure her-
Yeah, hers is on the website too.
Yeah, you know, in the past, she's, I'm glad we recognized her, because in the past, I don't know if you were, I don't think any of you were on the commission when we honored, oh, speaking of names, she was at STIC, she was the first Hispanic vice president, do you remember? Oh, she's no longer-
Denise Jordan, I mean, not Denise Jordan, Denise Hirst, Denise Hirst?
No, no, she worked at the college, I can't believe it. Vanessa O'Tara? Well, whoever she was.
Alexa, or you're talking about Lydia?
No. Don Gillette, I think it was Sonia. Yeah, but she was like the first vice president. And we honored her at STIC, and we had about eighty people show up at the event at STIC. And Catherine, Catherine through the SCA, don't, when we had two, we had a fifth and sixth grade come. It was really kind of interesting, whenever you do stuff with kids, but I remember them saying, a lot of them had never been in an elevator, and you know, when you have tickets on that floor. And a lot of them said they had never seen, you know, the view of the city that way. But Catherine donated all the books to make sure that every student that came received a book. So she's been supportive of our commission for quite a while. So I think her name was Rodriguez, Sonia Rodriguez.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, yeah, but if you saw her, you would know her, because she was so involved in the community. She's no longer in Springfield, okay? And then you're, and the student, there's not much of a biography for the student, is there, Ayana?
Um, I will get some information from her.
Yeah, okay, three minutes.
Yeah, because I have, we did the interview today, so I will, I'll call her.
Okay, so we'll, we've got the, the greetings to the city. Introduction of the, first, we'll do a blank and introduction of the awardees. And then, when would we do the musical presentation, before the awardees or after?
Yeah, I think before.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the individuals can speak? Close, close, close with a benediction or start with a benediction?
Think you should start with one.
Start with it, okay.
If you got the food and people are, you know.
Yeah, they'll be, okay, and then just make an announcement about refreshments, okay? Sounds good, I think it's going to be a really nice event, and I hope people are happy with the, with the effort.
Were you doing, um, I know we usually do like that flag raising part of it, so are you doing that or no?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't want to have, maybe have to go outside in-
Okay.
February.
It might be, it might be a spring day that day, like today.
Exactly.
But no guarantees.
It might be. First of all, I had a slip on the ice, and that, and then today-
Oh, gosh.
Like I'm in a lake with all the puddles that are out there. All right, well, maybe, okay, I will, I will speak to-
No, we don't have to do the flag raising, we don't-
No, the flag raising was for domestic violence awareness, and we will do that again.
Okay, yeah, no.
Yeah.
We don't have to.
I will speak to Tracy Whitfield to see which, what she wants to do in the program, okay? Because I want someone to give just a little overview of International Women's Day, the theme, how we pick these awardees and so forth and so on. So I'll speak to Tracy first to see what she wants to do. And, and again, everybody that's becoming, coming to the meetings, I will want you to play a role and be recognized. I think we're good. Can you think of anything else we need to do or missed?
Well, it looks like you guys got it all together. I had a client at four, so I didn't, that's why I was join, I joined late.
Oh, yeah, this has been a great committee. I will check with Denise and Karina to see what they'd like to do too. Denise is actually, Denise is playing a big part. When I called Dunkin' Donuts about the refreshments, they said, yes, you can have them, but somebody has to pick them up at three o'clock on the day of the event, coffee will be hot. And-
Oh, yeah.
Volunteer to do that, because she's right near there, so that was a big concern.
Nice.
Taking care of it. If there's anything from Coffee Cup, I probably will just pick it up in the morning.
Mm-hmm, and do we, and I know you talked a little bit about budget, so the medals, how is that going to be done, taken care of? Because I can pick them up, but how do you want to, because I know you said, I didn't know what you wanted to do.
How much are they going to be?
I'd have to look at the, the email.
Yeah, well, let me know how much it is, and then, I don't think we've received any donations.
Okay, I didn't know, because you said something about five hundred dollars or something that you were going to look into? The last meeting?
Oh.
Because Tracy had mentioned something about she would-
Oh, yes, I checked with the city solicitor.
Okay.
This, this does not fall in that category.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, got it.
I'm willing to donate twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, how much are they, because I could donate some money.
Okay, I'll take a, I'll take a look, and then we got to get the flowers too, so I'll get that piece too as well, so.
Well, I was hoping the flowers, we might be able to get donated.
Okay, yeah, I'll check with her too as well, to see if we can get those donated.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, I just wanted to check in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Let me know, yeah, hopefully it's not too much.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not.
Okay, all righty. Good progress, and I don't think we have, need another meeting, because our event's coming up, so if there's any, anything that, you can just contact me directly if there's anything you think we need. And I, I'll send out an email after I file up all, all these other people, and I will call Catherine Cummings to remind her that she said she would-
Tracy's in the meeting.
Hello, Tracy, hi and bye.
It's over. Thanks for joining us.
Welcome, it was a great meeting.
I just joined ten minutes ago, Tracy.
Okay, and Karina is joining us too, she's in the car.
Right.
Tracy, I'm, hi, Karina, I think you're muted.
So the grand total is thirty-seven twenty-nine for the medals, because we're doing four, and they're all engraved.
Oh, that's great.
Thirty-seven.
If I donate twenty-five, we don't have much left.
Oh, you're all set, I'll donate the two dollars.
No, no, I said twenty-five, two five.
Thirty-seven.
Oh, they're thirty-seven, oh, okay, then I'll donate the twelve dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Thirty-seven.
Hi, everybody, I'm driving, just to let you know.
Hi, Karina. All right, be careful.
It's thirty-seven twenty-five for four medals?
Yeah, is that too much?
No, no, that's great.
Fabulous.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And we've got one, let me see, one, two, three, four lines on each of them.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it's really good.
Yeah, you know, you know, I find those nice, and they're nice.
Ayana be bargain hunting.
Caterie, are we, are-
That's why. Tracy, I'm glad that you're here, because one of the things we were discussing is the, in the program, who was going to introduce who. And as vice president of the council, I wanted to check to see, do you want to introduce your friend? Or would you rather do, do small remarks on the, the history of International Women's Day?
Um, wherever you need me, Caterie.
Well, I, I would think that you'd probably be more comfortable introducing your friend, that you-
Did she send, did she send a bio? Because she's not really my friend per se, but somebody I know from the community. But I don't, whichever, whichever one you want me to do, I don't, doesn't matter.
I, I think that I'll ask, we'll have somebody else introduce her then, because I want to make sure that Karina and Denise all play a role. What I think I'll probably have you do, I mean, I'll do a, a general welcome. I think I'll have you do, we can talk about it, do more of like a, a little history of International Women's Day and what we were actually doing.
Okay.
Why we picked these women, because the theme in two thousand and twenty-five is education.
Education, okay.
That's why we, we are, we are honoring the particular people that we're honoring today. So, okay, so you, I'll have you do that after we do the greetings of, of the city and so forth.
Okay.
I'll have you do a, a little speech.
Are we giving each of them proclamations too?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Work on that, I'm sure we'll get them from the mayor.
Yeah, and what about, like, Adam and, and the state reps?
Um, I believe everybody got a, a media release on it, I know Buddy Williams is coming.
Okay.
We, Daisy will do a reminder. What we decided though is that if we have three or four state reps, Buddy will be the one representing the reps.
Okay.
And, and give each, you know, not everybody needs to read the same proclamation. And, and if it's just Adam, he can do his, so.
Okay.
And then, you will be doing, Tracy, a special introduction. But if anybody comes from the council, they can read the proclamation.
Okay.
Yeah, so wait and see who comes that day. So, the only other thing that we, and Ayana's working on it, the only other thing we don't have donated are the flowers, so.
So flowers to the-
We're going to give each awardee a bouquet.
Like four, four of them?
Yep.
I'll get them.
There we go.
Okay, so you're going to pay for them, because we've already talked to a florist?
Um, who, Nikki?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I'll get them.
Donating them.
Well, I, I- She's a small business and fairly like struggling.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'll just buy them.
You'll buy them, okay, so I'll let her know what we want. I'll set them up, I'll set it up for you.
No, you don't have to, she's like my cousin, so I'll just talk to her directly. No, you don't have to. Uh, she's like my cousin, so I'll just talk to her directly.
That's fine. I mean, no, I already been talking to her. I've already mentioned it to her.
Yeah, we grew up together.
Uh, yeah, no, I know Nikki, too.
So, uh, Karina, if.
Thank you, thank you, Tracy.
What would you like me to do that day? Just let me know.